Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the January 8, 2024 Workshop for the Greenville City Council. I'm Mayor PJ Connelly, and I'll be presiding over today's workshop. First, I'd like to call on our city clerk for the roll call.
Yes, sir. Mayor Connelly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Daniels.
Present.
All right, Councilmember Forman has let us know she's on her way. Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson should also be on the way. Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connelly, have a form.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Mr. Manager, any changes?
No changes.
All right. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As others say aye.
Motion passes for a zero.
All right. We'll move on to new business.
Mayor, the first item under new business is a sports complex feasibility study interim report and presentation. One of the strategic goals of council currently is to make Greenville a destination community. And back in June of 2023, council asked staff to move forward with a feasibility study on the potential impact of a sports complex for the Greenville-Pitt County community, whether that be indoor, outdoor, to look at the cost of capital, the cost of operations, and economic impact it would have on the local economy. At that point in time, the city engaged Victus Advisors, who has a wealth of experience in providing these types of feasibility studies for municipalities and local governments around the country. In fact, one of the major clients of Victus has been the Virginia Beach area as they've moved forward their indoor sports complex over the last several years. We have with us here managing partner of Victus, Brian Connelly, in attendance to provide the first part of an overview of this project, knowing that the first part will be to see the findings have been as far as the most potential for the Greenville-Pitt County area. The second part of this part of our conversation will be at the planning session where Brian will go through the impact on the cost of capital, operations, as well as the economic impact to the region. But before we get started with that, I'd like to introduce Andrew Schmidt, President and CEO of Visit Greenville of Carolina, to give an introduction to the project.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to be here. And again, I'm Andrew Schmidt, I'm President and CEO of Visit Greenville NC. That also encompasses our sports commission, which we brand ourselves as Play Greenville NC Sports. So just some very quick background before I introduce Brian. Sports tourism right now is the fastest growing market in the hospitality industry today. So with households with kids, that household income, 10% of that household income is spent on sports-related activities, and that continues to increase. So we know that that's a growing market. Last year, 2223 fiscal year, we booked 49 tournaments into Greenville-Pitt County that generated about $13 million of economic impact, estimated. We do have great facilities here. D1 facilities, JuCo facilities with Pitt Community College, Reckon Parks facilities, high school facilities, and county facilities. The commonality with all these facilities is that they're for someone else first. Sports tourism really doesn't have the opportunity to book those facilities as we would like. So we turn away an awful lot of business, people that would like to bring tournaments here. One quick story, then I'll introduce Brian. We have a gentleman that lives in Greenville who wanted to put on 10 softball tournaments, and he cannot do that here. He took all of his tournaments outside of Pitt County. So instead of bringing in a lot of people into the county and creating that economic impact and that destination profile and that exposure, he had to take them out. So that's an example of things that we deal with at the sports tourism office. So we're excited that this is being discussed, very excited. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Brian. Brian with Victus is going to give you an update on where we are so far, and we're glad to have you here.
Thanks, Andrew. Thanks for having me this afternoon. As has been mentioned, my name's Brian Connelly. I'm the founder and managing principal of Victus Advisors. So this is the interim presentation. So we will be focusing specifically here on our market research takeaways from the Greenville Sports Tourism Complex Feasibility Study. We were hired in 2023 by the city to do a sports tourism market analysis and a financial and economic analysis. What I'm presenting today is going to be that market analysis. So what are the strengths and weaknesses of Greenville as a sports destination market? And then what are the market facility opportunities for the city of Greenville? The second phase is what I'm going to present in a few weeks at the session on the 27th. That'll be all the quantified analysis. But right now, I'm just going to talk about what we've identified as your top opportunity. This is an overview of our methodology. So everything above the red dotted line is what we are presenting today. Below that is what we'll present in a couple of weeks. Today, I'll be talking about all of the research that went into our process. So analysis of existing facilities, analyzing Greenville as a destination sports market, looking at competitive and comparable facilities and markets, and then the research we did in terms of primary market engagement, interviewing local stakeholders, and then, very importantly, interviewing sports event organizers regionally and nationally about Greenville as a destination for sports. So what I pulled out here, there's a lot of work and reporting that went behind this, but what I pulled out here is kind of the highlights of our market research process. So this is Greenville sports tournament activity going back about three years to, or almost four years now, to February 2020. So as you can see, the black bars are the number of hotel nights generated by sports tournaments in each of these categories. So baseball and softball have generated the most tournament nights over this three-year window, followed by robotics events, and soccer, and tennis, and golf, and some others. But clearly, baseball and softball have been the primary drivers of sports tourism. And what I want to note is that's despite a lack of what we call sports tourism caliber complexes for those sports, which I'll talk about on the next page. It's also worth noting that a lot of the partnerships that Greenville has that's driving those hotel nights already are with some of the biggest organizations within that space nationally. So USSA softball, USA softball, Little League softball, Dynamic Baseball, these are all organizations in that space that honestly, a lot of our clients would love to have a type of partnership and relationships that Greenville has with those organizations. When we look specifically at the ball diamond inventory that already exists in Pitt County, what you'll see is a lot of these are very, are small facilities. So, you know, one baseball field, one baseball field. The largest baseball facility only has three baseball fields. For us, sports tourism complex, the bar for that when it comes to baseball and/or softball at this stage in the development of the industry is about eight fields in one place or more. So the, it's extremely impressive that the economic impact that has been generated through the sports has occurred even without a facility that's larger than three baseball fields or four softball. Just, you know, the gray lines are the ones that are available for sports tourism. The white ones are ones that, as Andrew said, they don't even have access to. Another thing we did is meet with a lot of local stakeholders. We talked to Greenville Recreation and Parks, Visit Greenville, Greenville-ENC Alliance, the city, Pitt County Economic Development. And one of the things we found is, and this is not always the case, all of these different organizations saw significant value in sports tourism. They all had specific organizational goals that they felt sports tourism helped check the box on, whether it's business attraction, job retention, quality of life, differentiating and diversifying the city's economy, enhancing the regional reputation of the city of Greenville. Everybody we talked to understood sports tourism and tournament opportunities and felt like it met with their organizational goals, which is very positive that everybody's kind of rowing in the same direction when it comes to opportunities like this. When we talked to stakeholders, local stakeholders, we also asked them what they saw as the strengths of Greenville as a sports tourism destination. So the three things that came across most were, one, the location and access, the central location in eastern North Carolina, the reputation as a hub for culture and healthcare and education, and the access, relatively convenient access to I-95. Hospitality amenities were also frequently mentioned, affordable restaurants, convenient hotels, more hotels that are potentially in development, and then the reputation and experience. So it was mentioned by a lot of the local stakeholders that the area already does a great job hosting some events, like ECU football game weekends, or the Little League Softball World Series. And also, it's mentioned that baseball and softball have always been very popular in the area. Sports Illustrated acknowledged Greenville as a sports town USA in North Carolina, in particular for being a baseball backup. What we then did is we went and started talking to regional and national tournament organizers. And this is across indoor and outdoor sports. Every type of sport you could think of that's played in the area. And we asked them the same questions about what they thought of Greenville as a sports tourism destination. It aligned very nicely with what the stakeholders felt about Greenville. So again, location and access was important to them, able to service people in the Carolinas and the southeast US. They all said that Greenville has the necessary hospitality amenities in terms of hotels and restaurants and things like that. And then, number three, beyond just sort of the generalized idea of the reputation and brand of Greenville, a lot of them specifically mentioned that East Carolina University was a significant asset when it came to sports tourism, in terms of having a Division I athletic department that's right there in that city. It's an attraction for a lot of the U-sports that would be interested in coming here. Across all of our projects that we've done over the last, over the last 12 years, we've done a lot of surveying of, of event organizers and event attendees, asking them why they choose different markets and different facilities as, you know, the best sports destination community. Across all of those surveys, 73% of the respondents say that the sports facility itself is why it's the best. So that's very consistent across every market we work in. If you don't have the sports facility that's needed, you're not going to get the event in the first place, which is what Andrew said about the local person you have that wants to do a large number of softball tournaments here but can't because that large-scale multi-field facility doesn't exist. Once you get past that, you hear a lot about, oh, it's got to be accessible, it's got to have hotels and restaurants and family entertainment options. But almost every time we do these surveys, the second thing that pops up is not just those elements, it's also community interest and support for that particular event. So once you have the facility, the thing that gets people coming back again and again is not just the accessibility and the hospitality amenities, but it's feeling welcome and important there. So when we look at sports in particular, where there's an opportunity to bring in a tournament, we see a lot of opportunity for communities when the local community cares a lot about that sport or those sports. And when the local community kind of rolls out the red carpet for events, the local restaurants and hotels know they're there, they put out specials, you know, for tournament participants, and it feels like they matter there. We get questions all the time, oh, how do we, as this mid-sized city, compete against the largest city in the region? And a lot of times, you know, you have the advantage of being small, where people come and they feel welcome, and they feel wanted and appreciated that they're there. Talking again about that quality of sports facilities element, you know, keeping in mind this is 70, 75% of what makes it the best destination. Right now, Greenville currently lacks sports tourism caliber facilities with eight or more ball diamonds, eight or more basketball, volleyball courts, eight or more rectangular fields, there's no 50-meter competitive pool. So when you start talking about, about sports facilities at a competitive scale and a tourism-driving scale, they're simply lacking here in Greenville. When we talk about proximity and access, this is a map. This is about, the red line's about a two-and-a-half hour drive, the green line's about a five-hour total drive from downtown Greenville. As you can see, there's a population of more than 25 million people within a five-hour drive. So when we look at the primary markets for sports tourism, we're looking at a family piling into the SUV or the minivan on a Friday afternoon, driving usually within about five to six hours, and then staying the night in your hotels on Friday night and Saturday night, participating in the tournament on Saturday and Sunday. You will have some three, four, or five-day tournaments, especially in the summer or on holiday weekends, but the majority of the events are going to be those two-day tournaments. So this is really, these are the markets you can draw from within that five-to-six-hour overnight stay range, from Washington, Charlotte, Virginia Beach, Raleigh, Richmond. 25 million people, given your location on the east coast, your access to I-95 is a huge asset. In terms of hotels and amenities, there are over 2,100 hotel rooms in Pitt County. And not just in terms of inventory, but we also look at the price of those hotels and how, how much the class of hotel and the pricing of hotels appeals to the sports tourism consumer. The sports tourism consumer is, again, it's usually a family that's looking for convenient hotels with a free breakfast and reasonable rates. In 2022, Pitt County hotels had average daily rates ranging from about $80, $85 to $120 per night, whereas the national average in 2022 was almost $150 a night. So from sports tourism standpoint, that's an opportunity that you can room-block hotels for the events at an affordable rate. Talking about, again, another driver, reputation and brand, there's a number of factors that are driving this for Greenville. Number one, as I mentioned, that baseball softball reputation is significant in terms of what you've done, what you've been honored and been acknowledged for, the local passion for those sports. From an event organizer feedback standpoint, the area has a reputation for being a convenient location and kind of a hub for eastern Carolina, having all the hospitality amenities, the reputation that's tied to ECU's presence as a Division I athletic department. And then also, the last piece of this is the current sports marketing efforts. So Visit Greenville and Play Greenville have already been aggressively marking Pitt County as a sports destination. In our report, we flagged some advertisements that we see and have seen even before we were working here in some of the national publications and things like that. So you have an active, not just visitors bureau, but also sports element to that visitor bureau's efforts that is a great asset as well, once you have the facilities for them to market. So once we did our research, we put together a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat analysis for Greenville as a sports tourism destination, and we did a facility opportunity assessment. From a SWOT analysis standpoint, the strengths of Greenville as a sports tourism destination, again, location and access, lodging and hospitality amenities, reputation in sports, in particular baseball softball and ECU athletics, and then the brand that's being driven, that's being driven and marketed by Visit Greenville and Play Greenville. On the flip side, on the weaknesses, weaknesses side, you know, the only weakness we see as a sports tourism destination is simply the lack of sports tourism caliber facilities across most sports. So we found opportunities for a wide variety of sports in terms of sports tourism opportunities. In some markets, we come and you say, okay, you already have this sports tourism facility, you have this sports tourism facility, you know, this is the one that you're missing. In this case, it was a wide variety of sports where there, where there simply wasn't a sports tourism generating large-scale facility. So that was the primary weakness. Looking externally at the market, the opportunities are, one, attract visitors from that regional drive market, those 25 million people within five hours, opportunities to meet organizational goals of a number of local organizations, city, county, and other such, you know, public and quasi-public organizations. And then, number three, there was strong interest from almost all of the sports event organizers we talked to, both indoor and outdoor, again, which is not always the case. You name the sport, and they said, yeah, we'd love to be there if you had the facility. And then, again, looking externally still at threats, regional facility competition, in any market, any tourism market you go into is always going to be, always going to be a threat. What we find is the way that you sustain a competitive advantage is through, through sports where your community is passionate about them, sports where you have an established reputation and brand in that sport. You know, we, if a client says, hey, you know, we heard lacrosse is getting big, we don't really have a lacrosse community here, but should we build a lacrosse complex? We'll say, well, you could, but, you know, it's that, it's that local regional passion for the sport and things that gives you that platform to build on a longstanding reputation in this space. And then the second thread is really just a matter of allocating your resources correctly. So every community we work in has a limit on the resources they can put towards developing a complex like this. And what we see as best practices is identifying what opportunity is going to generate the most economic impact, the most bang for your buck on that initial spend, so that three to five years later, after the facility's opened, you're now generating that incremental economic impact, incremental economic impact, excuse me, from hotel nights and visitor tax dollars, that you can then take that increment and say, okay, now what are we going to do with this? And you kind of build, build on it. Whereas if you take that first pool of money, you spend it on something that doesn't have a huge impact, now you're kind of stuck. So it's how do you focus those limited resources to maximize the long-term potential for that market and continued reinvestment in the space? So this is ultimately what we've identified as the opportunities for the greatest ROI for those limited resources. So we've ranked them, these are the four top ones, keep in mind, so it's not like one is first and one is last. Out of the four best opportunities, this is how we're ranking them. And what we did is we evaluated, first, the total estimated capitalized cost associated with that project. So what that means is not just what does it cost to build it, but also what it costs over 20, 25, 30 years to continue operating it. So is it something that might break even, or is it something that you have a deficit you need to subsidize? So we rolled that together to come up with a total estimated cost. And then we compared that against our estimates of incremental sports tourism events, sports tournament activity that could be generated each. And so when we did that analysis comparing the total capitalized cost against that estimated incremental economic impact, the number one opportunity that we identified was a baseball softball complex with at least eight to 12 diamonds. We kind of have minimums that we put in there. Number two was an indoor court facility, so typically that's going to be basketball, volleyball, plus other uses you can do indoors, like footsault and wrestling and cheer and things like that. Number three was an outdoor rectangular fields complex, so that's going to be your soccer, your flag football, things like that, lacrosse. And then, number four, was a 50-meter pool aquatic facility. So these were kind of the top four that we identified, and then this is how we ranked them based upon what we think's going to have the biggest bang for the buck in terms of that initial investment in one of these facilities. Another thing about softball and baseball, as I mentioned before, it's really impressive what this community has already done without a, for example, baseball facility that has more than three fields. So to us, that shows that establish, establish reputation, in fact, that you already have the partnerships with some of the most major national organizers in that space, those are the types of things that can help you establish that long-term competitive advantage for a new complex in that space. So somebody an hour away builds the same complex, you have the advantage of that, of that reputation and brand, and it's a place people want to be, and you have the established partners you've been working with a long time that trust you and know you're going to do a great job for their event. So lastly, our next steps, on Saturday the 27th, we're going to present our key findings from the Phase Two analysis. So what we'll be doing there is we're putting together a recommended operating model, usage estimates, seasonality, all of that for a baseball softball complex. We're going to put together an operating pro forma that shows revenues and expenses, that shows annual visitors from, from outside that are going to be staying overnight. We'll tie that into an economic and fiscal impact analysis, so a number of hotel, incremental hotel nights generated, incremental spending by visitors, where that money is spent throughout the economy, how that money flows through the economy, jobs that'll be supported by it, wages that'll be supported by it, and then direct tax revenues to the city and the county that can be generated by that visitation. And then the last piece will be a funding analysis. So we'll have a sort of rough order of magnitude, cost estimate related to, related to the complex, and then we'll evaluate that against what your, your opportunities are for funding, funding a project like this, not just to get it built, but also to keep it sustained over, over the long term, over decades. So that's what's coming up in a few weeks. And at this point, if you have any questions about where the work we've done so far and where we're going, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Do you have questions?
I mean, I don't have any questions. I mean, I kind of had a feeling that that's what the analysis would come back. I mean, I know there's a lot of people that are like, oh, baseball, softball. But, you know, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on what side you're on, it's a huge sport, and it's, it's very, very popular in our area, and it's revenue-producing. I've got kids that are involved in softball right now, and I know that with my limited interactions with Sarah Locke Complex, that complex is full every single weekend that is booked. I mean, I think they, last meeting that I went to, I think they had maybe one or two weekends that weren't taken. So I know that facilities are such a huge issue in our area, and, I mean, given, given the analysis that you had, I think was a 73% of percentage was that the facilities itself, I think the rest of it, I think we could beat all of our competition with. I think restaurants-wise, entertainment opportunities, we've got East Carolina University here. I think that even some of those other areas around here like Wilson and Rocky Mountain have made investments in it. I think that if anybody had an opportunity between the three of them, I would venture out to say that Greenville, North Carolina would win just about every time, if we have a competing facility.
Mayor Connelly, I think that that kind of notes the position we directed this feasibility study in, that this wasn't a self-referring prophecy. We did not go into this with Mr. Connelly saying, this is what we think. We wanted to take an objective look at the market to see if there was any opportunity for the city of Greenville and Pitt County and ECU, because collectively, this benefits all three. And what we did find is that, yes, I mean, we all looked very favorable in the market. It's almost one of those, if you build it, they will definitely come. So now that we've got through that first hurdle, and also looked at, basically what the data says, what the greatest opportunity is, now we go to the next step. It's just a step-by-step process, where we then look at what is the cost of capital, what is the cost of operations, what is the economic impact it could have in this region if we did have this kind of complex, from the position of heads in beds, restaurant sales, retail sales, time spent in our community, and the impact it would have on the ECU community, and the fact that they get to show off their facilities and their academic programs, as well as their sports programs. So that will be the next step that we introduce to council. We have, staff has not even seen that themselves. So we'll be diving in with Mr. Connelly over the next couple of weeks, prepare to provide you that next step at the planning session.
Councilor Blackburn.
When you're doing your pro forma, you may have already captured who you want involved and what you're going to be asking them, but I would be very interested in knowing if we are talking about ECU. We also have to consider the county and our schools, and especially when we're looking at funding, you know, how is this going to be funded, and who's going to use it, how much? So when you're doing your pro forma, again, you're the professional, but I would be really interested in that kind of data.
Yeah, we're going to give you exactly that. And, you know, the Phase One study was a little bit more of an external study on what the opportunities are out there, who wanted to come from a tournament standpoint. When we kicked off Phase Two, the first thing we did was, was talk to the local user groups to find out about that weekday use. So we can plug in who's going to be there on Monday afternoon, Tuesday afternoon. So, yes, we, we've looked at the opportunity and identified a facility based upon that economic impact opportunity, but once it, once it comes online, it'll very much be for the, the local use as well, so it can be a hybrid facility in that sense.
And you'll be able to find out where the money will come from?
Hopefully. We'll give you, we typically look through all your various funding sources, the way other communities, not just in North Carolina, but regionally, nationally have funded these types of projects, and we'll give you some, some different options and opportunities there.
And I think from Mr. Conley's perspective, can give what the, what the outlook looks as far as potential costs, but I think collectively, we need to nurture our relationships with our other local agencies, whether that be with the ECU, whether that be with the county and kind of, and look and explore what some of those opportunities may be. We can give the overall impact, but ultimately, it would be looking upon staff as well as council to engage and see if there is any opportunities in the future for us to partnership.
And what I don't want us to do is get into an either-or, not either-or, but, but this and not that situation, because I know as a council and as a city, we have a lot of goals, we have a lot of aspirations, we also have a lot of needs. Performing Arts Center is something that I'm very interested in, so are a lot of people in our community. I know that housing is an issue for us, so I think it's real important to be very, you know, to use a lot of wisdom and clarity when we look at something like this from the start, so, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Oh, one more thing.
There's one more.
I'm going to clap, man, that was good. This hurts.
Thank you for your presentation. I think my statement is more for the staff than, than you all. I like to see us, as we move forward, should we move forward with this, is to add in what transportation will look like. I don't think we ever need to have anything where everyone in Greenville doesn't have access to, and I don't think it would be wise to find transportation after it's built, wherever it may build, should that happen.
Can I have a question also? As it relates to offerings, has track and field been considered as you look at possibilities of diversifying the usage of the facility?
Yes. Oh, you mean in the baseball softball complex?
Or in the complex in, in general, as track and field as a sport?
What we did to this point was, we, we looked at all outdoor sports and, and indoor sports, so we looked at track, you know, particularly the track, we looked at track from, from both an outdoor and indoor standpoint. And, you know, when, when our full report's available, you can see all the different sports we had interviews with and discussions. And what we did is, is by each type of sport, so ball, diamonds, courts, pools, soccer fields, different types of fields, track was, was one of them, both indoor track and outdoor track. We, we identified the ones that, based upon tournament activity opportunities, had, had the most opportunity for, for tournament night generation. So, track, track was part of that conversation, and from this standpoint, you know, as we were breaking it down by sport, it didn't rise to the top in terms of the, the opportunity rankings from a return on investment standpoint, but it was part of that analysis. As far as, you know, building a complex and then having it be multi-sport, we, we haven't looked at that. You know, eventually, if the project does move forward and sites are identified and master planning is done for those sites, there's almost always opportunities to say, you know, especially if it's an outdoor complex, to say, we're going to put, you know, some walking and running trails on the site and things like that, but we're nowhere near, near to that, that point in the, in this project yet.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number two.
Item number two, Unified Development Ordinance Project. I will call for Chief Planner Shante Gooby to lead the discussion.
No offense, Shante.
None taken.
Half the crowd left.
I know. Maybe it'll cool it down a little bit. My item is very short. It's just a brief overview of an item that's going to be coming to you in February. It's Unified Development Ordinance, and you say, what is that? So, within the city code, we have Title IX, and then, within Title IX, we've got various chapters, and we specifically have the zoning and subdivision ordinance, and those are the ones that we're specifically talking about tonight. So, the next question is, why are we even doing this? So, we have not had a comprehensive update for the zoning and the subdivision ordinance since the 90s. So, I'll put some things up here just to kind of remind you of how far we've come, and that some of these things are still living in our books or something new. So, 1990s AOL, we can all remember dialing in to the internet, we've had DVDs, but we've also had the advent of Uber, and so, that's brand new, and so, our, our books have sort of stayed stagnant since the 90s, but we do those often on text amendments as they come to you. So, the purpose, again, we want to look at modernizing, consolidating, and assessing our development standards. And so, one of the things that we really want to do is to have user-friendly language. We want to have diagrams and pictures which help to explain things so much more. We want to eliminate redundancies in our zoning districts and uses, and then, we just want to update our regulations for any kind of legislative changes. So, who benefits? Multiple people benefit from this. It can be citizens, developers, stakeholders, obviously, city council, and city staff. And again, the aim is to provide, to provide easy-to-understand language, and then, also to keep more predictability in our decision-making process and modernizing our standards. How does this work? One of the first things we need to do is evaluate our current code, and then, look for solutions or approaches, and then, develop a UDO. This is sort of handled through a task force that would be established. That task force would sort of be your, your steering committee in a lot of ways, of how it works and how it's going to look, but there would also be extensive public engagement. And then, both the draft and the final versions will be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission and also by city council. Where is this impacted? So, it impacts, I guess you could say, two different sets. Within the city of Greenville, we have our jurisdictional boundary, which is that purple boundary. Anything in green is the city limits, or what we would call the city proper, but we also have properties within the city's jurisdiction that's in the ETJ or extraterritorial territories. Thank you. And so, both of these groups, the zoning and the subdivision ordinance applies. And so, again, we will have an item coming to you at your February 5th council agenda. We have already had requests for proposals, we've done interviews, we have selected the consultant that we would like to work with, and so, we will bring this back to you for approval of a contract. And then, when will this happen? So, if we have a contract approved and signed in February, this whole entire project's going to take about 18 to 24 months long. It involves task force meetings, public engagement, and again, the presentations to PNC and council. Tentatively, a completion date to have this adopted, we're talking fall of winter of 2025. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Counselor Barker.
This is so exciting. This is great news, because so much has changed since the 90s, and we come up against some of the old ideas all the time when we're having discussions, and I think we've already talked about some of them. So, this is great. I know this has been just to many of our new members on council. It allows us to address climate change, vegetation, streets, accessibility, as well as sprawl and center-city development. One of my questions is, do we know, I know you do know, the composition of the task force, how's that going to be? What's the ratio of developers, public, you know, just members of the public, parks representatives, folks with disabilities? Are those slot, going to be slotted out?
So, I'll, I'll give you, in the, in the past, like when we did the MSDD, which is our Building Infrastructure Standards, what staff did was they put together a mix of members from the community and members, a mix of members from the development community and contractors that all could work together to be able to help bet where we went with this. In addition to, and you can't forget the, the public engagement process to this, I don't think that we're that, to that level yet, but what we do is, when we assemble that, we will share that list with, with councils, so you can see the diversity that's made up in that list.
That's good, and the, the key difference is here is that the MSDD really is only about how you put together a building, where this really has to do with everything from how walkable is our community to how much open space do we have. I mean, this is, this is, really, it's also a good opportunity for us to consider our need and, and overdue need to return to our Horizons Plan, and I almost think these things could be done together in tandem, in harmony.
And the point there was being that they would be far-reaching, in that we would look at, to create the diversity on that, that would fill each one of those aspects that you just mentioned, and then, provide that back to council.
Okay, good, good, good. And want to make sure that, like I said, we have folks with disabilities, as well as just members of the community, I think in Sierra Club, Frogs, you know, all of our groups. And then, again, not to derail the conversation, but what, what are we thinking about when we look at updating the Horizons Plan? Because this really dovetails so perfectly with that. I know it's too much to do at once, but it is that time, it's Horizons 2026.
So, we will use the Horizons Plan, of course, it's a much more general document, but one of the things that will come out of this is, obviously, there are still principles and goals and objectives within the Horizon that will help as far as our rewrite of the zoning ordinance as well. So, that will be, that will be used as we're modernizing and updating it. Now, the update of the Horizons is going to be separate and apart. I think we need to put the zoning and the subdivision ordinance to rest, get it settled, because by that time, we'll, we will be gearing up for Horizons to be either updated or very close to a rewrite in and of itself. But for now, the process is going to focus on zoning and subdivision, but Horizons will still be part of the recipe.
The existing Horizons?
Yes.
Just a very, sort of 30,000-foot question. I know this is already in place, but I think this is now, now is the time to ask this question. Would it be more useful to do, to redo Horizons first and then do this? Is there any advantage to doing it this way compared with that other way?
I don't think so. We're fine with Horizons. We still have things in Horizons that have not been accomplished that will come out of this. So, for example, in Horizons, there are multiple different references that we talk about mixed use. And so, one of the things that will come out of rewriting the zoning ordinance is mixed use, and going ahead and getting that, I'm going to say squared away. But within Horizons itself, again, there are multiple things that are still useful or guiding principles. And so, do the zoning and the subdivision first, get that modernized, but also get it easy to understand, and then, we can work on Horizons again. The zoning and the subdivision ordinance is much more long overdue.
How many, how many land use plans have we done since the 90s? I think, and I think that the Horizons Plan we have in place is actually a very good plan, especially the text part. We all focus on the future land use plan map, but the text is actually really good. And one of the things that I hear very often from members of the public is, we have this Horizons Plan, we have this text that focuses on complete streets and walkable cities and a mixed-use development, and yet, our ordinances do not seem to speak to those same things. So, I, I think, I, I hear what you're saying, and I think you're absolutely right. I think that's a good idea.
And we also got, I mean, this is a large undertaking in addition to Horizons Plan. So, our planning department is going to absolutely be booking it over the next several years, so we also got to look at the capacity to get things done.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I would, I would never.
Yeah, there you go.
As a council member safety department wants, my goodness, we'd lose our entire staff.
So, there we go. That's an update on the UDO. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Shante.
Our third item of new business is presentation by Greenville Police Department on current recruitment and retention efforts and recommendations. Call forward our Chief Salz for the presentation. I would like to make a few comments upfront. I think that we would all agree that public safety is our number one priority, the safety of our community, and be able to react quick to emergency is the number one priority of the city, hands down, will never change, will always be number one. We've all been touched and seen the impact of the shortage of law enforcement around the country. The city of Greenville is not immune to that, we've been touched by that, but we're all in the same company. We've all felt the impact of a reduction in staff and the turnover in staff vacancies. Now, I recall back in September, council asked, well, what are we doing about it? And I committed to council at that point in time that Chief Salz and myself would work on a plan to put into place that would put us in a position to better recruit and retain staff, and as you will see, we've seen a significant number of vacancies over the last three years. Our goal is to drive that down, to drive that down for the best interest of our community and make sure that we are doing everything we can to recruit the best officers, retain the best officers, train the best officers, give our officers the best equipment, so that they can go out there and serve our community with pride. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to Chief Salz to let him give you an indication of what we have been working on over the last few months. These are changes that are within the purview of the city manager to move forward with, but we want to bring these items to you, to you have an overview of the direction we're going, so that we can, again, retain and recruit the best officers to the city.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, council, I'm a little taken aback before I get started, that the manager who I answer directly to would make a short joke about law enforcement, and here I'm standing in front of you. I think that was directly, directly at me, so he and I will talk about that later. What's really cool is y'all don't know when I'm telling the truth or not.
He told me about it.
Thank you so much for allowing me to make the presentation.
So, now you have problems with him, you know what I mean? Make sure I don't live on his street, so when you don't want to come, please.
Well, the good thing about it is I know where it drives, we'll handle that later tonight. But thank you all so much for, for allowing us to make the presentation, and without further ado, we'll get started and just talk about a couple of things that you already know. The first responders are tasked with a lot of different things. Over the years, many of the things that we are now doing have been piled on because other entities are not able to do them, and the officers are required to learn a plethora of things that they may not have had to learn before, and it, it has caused different types of stresses. An example that I have that best suits me right now to share with you is my oldest daughter started basic law enforcement training this past week, and listening to her talk about the things that, that they're piling on and the things that they're going through are way different than when I did it 27 years ago. So, it is, it is rapidly changing, and we need to keep up. In order to continue to recruit, though, and to have eligible candidates, GPD, your police department, has got to remain competitive and reward loyalty. We have fallen in rank significantly over the years. There was a time when, when we were really one or two in the state, and that's not a fault of anybody, it's nobody in, in our government, nobody at this table, and nobody within our, our staff. It's a fact that we have, other areas have been ramping up when we were, we were in a really good spot, so we were not necessarily ramping at the same time. This decline is in, in the competitive hiring process, though, it has occurred rapidly, and we can all point to what, about 19 or 20, when we saw the steep decline with COVID. This chart is important because it shows you just with our benchmark cities, and I've been very fortunate to have support, and our HR director's in the room with us this evening, her staff has been instrumental in helping get these numbers together over time. A lot of these numbers are compiled on an ongoing basis, and we just hang on to them so that we know where we're at, so that when I get that question of where do we fall, I'm able to show you. We've stepped back to about seventh from third pretty quick, and it's, it's definitely time for us to, to ramp up and look at what we can do to fix that. And so, you'll know the, the way those numbers are portrayed, that's a $60,000 salary on the, the beginning as compared to our 48, 674, with where we currently fall. This one is, is something that is of grave concern to me, because no matter what, you can only do so much more with less until it becomes a problem. Meaning, if you have less staff and you're constantly asking the same amount of work or greater from that amount of staff, then they're going to get burnt out, and that's what I can't afford. We work a, the type of work where... We've stepped back to about seventh from third pretty quick, and it's definitely time for us to, to ramp up and look at what we can do to fix that. And so, you'll know the, the way those numbers are portrayed, that's a $60,000 salary on the beginning as compared to our 48, 674 with where we currently fall. This one is, is something that is of grave concern to me because no matter what, you can only do so much more with less until it becomes a problem. Meaning, if you have less staff and you're constantly asking the same amount of work or greater from that amount of staff, then they're going to get burnt out, and that's what I can't afford. We work the type of work where people need to break, we need to time away, and I am very fortunate, very fortunate to have, to be a part of a department where all of our staff are giving us 110%. The numbers they posted this year alone have been staggering in terms of the amount of work that they've got done being short. So, in terms of what they're doing for you and for our city, my hat is off to the men and women. But imagine if I was not seeing constant vacancies in the 30 range, what we would be able to do then. For more than two years now, we've never seen a staffing shortage of less than around 22 vacancies since March of 2022. We have seen a hike in that vacancy rating of about 44. So, we've, we've managed to beat that down. Tonight, I stand here in front of you, I can tell you it's 27, but then we have 10 in the academy right now. So, we pray that we get all 10 of those to graduate, and that puts us in the teens. And if I can, through, through what our staff is doing with our recruitment, if we can have another group of around 10 go into the Fall Academy, we may be able to see single digits before the end of 2024. I've stood here in front of you before and told you that 2024 would be our year to gain and to make ground up, because this is a year where we're seeing minimal retirements, and I think that the position the department's in right now, this will be a gainer year. This is very important for you to think about where our officers are in terms of our growth, in terms of where our people are leaving and where they're, where they're making their biggest jump in growth. You look over to the far right of that chart and you see that about 28% are in that 15-plus year mark. That is extremely important. I heard the fire chief the other day make a statement about how many people he had that were on, we'll use the term on the street, that were on the street with minimal experience. And his, his issue being a little bit different, he said, I can get the people, I need the experience to show those people how to do it. Well, we got to be very careful in our balance. Our training routine takes 20, around 20 weeks just to get out of basic law enforcement training, 16 to 20 weeks, depending on how it goes. Then there's another 16 to 20 weeks of field training. So, you can see how it takes a really long time for me to put a competent person on the street. And I don't say competent in terms of them as an individual, I mean competent in terms of being prepared to deal with what they're going to face in the job that we do. Key, though, is that of those two first categories, you can see that about 50% of those are in that zero to seven-year window, and that's where we're losing the majority of our staff, is before year seven. The department has suffered a loss of approximately 20 sworn officers per year beginning in 2019. The unfortunate truth, though, is that about 50% of those that we lose, they're leaving to go to other agencies. So, why do they leave? Higher starting pay, less workload, location, and a greater incentive package, if you will, than what we're able to currently offer. So, those things are, those are not the ones I want to hear. Somebody who's getting out to go to culinary school and wants to start a restaurant, then I don't offer that at the police department. And, well, I would make an ugly joke if the fire chief were here and say, but we could send them over to the fire department. It's a great rivalry that we have. We love each other. It's important, though, to note exactly that. If you think about the things that each department offers, like the fire department versus the police department, for instance, there are different incentives for each type of work. In law enforcement, though, the thing to remember is that the officer can look to another agency for a different package of incentives. We want ours to be, as I've heard said before, top tier. So, what are the proposed changes? Our current starting pay is around 4672, 48672. After probation, the officer's somewhere in the neighborhood of 51106. It's recommended that the starting pay be moved to 51106 and the additional 5% at the end of the six-month probation, putting it at 536. Now, I don't like doing this to you in presentations, but I'm going to run back here and show you that if we were to accomplish that, it would put us back into that second or third place, because you always got to remember others are looking too, and this is the most current, accurate data that I have. In addition to that, we need to consider some form of a loyalty program. And that program would begin with the first award of loyalty beginning somewhere around the five-year mark. It could be, it can move, it can be a gauge that we move. But what we need to create in addition to bringing in and the promoting ourselves for recruitment is the retention, because we need those senior personnel as well. And at the end, you'll see a recommendation slide, so think of all of these as options. We currently have an advanced patrol officer level and a master patrol officer level, and the senior patrol officer level is the next evolution that makes perfect sense. It fits in between the two. Currently, the APO, advanced patrol officer level, is a 2% increase once the officer's eligible. We would move that to 2.5%. We would add the senior patrol officer at the four-year mark with a 5% increase, and we would keep the MPO, which is master patrol officer, at the 10-year mark with a 10% increase. And incrementally, as you can see, the more time you give, the more longevity you have, the greater the increase. And that is the goal, is to bring those new officers along with us so that we build a robust, healthy department. Other incentives that can be considered, we currently have in place now a 1% increase for starting salary for veteran officers who have served elsewhere in the state, up to 10%. So, if somebody wanted to transfer to Greenville, and there's no real transfer, just so you'll know, it doesn't work that way, it's a very complicated process. But we have been very fortunate of recent, and we have hired officers from other agencies who were looking to make a change. I wouldn't consider it headhunting, but if they're going to leave and they want somewhere else to go, then we want them to come to Greenville. And when we talk about our brand and we talk about home team, that's what we tell our officers all the time, and I share with them when I go to roll call. If you want people to, to know where to work, then tell them what we've got going in Greenville. The more that they're able to share, the more likely we are to pull those people to work for us. Some of the additional incentives that you'll see are things such as military, second language, relocation allowances, education, and shift differentials for working nights versus working days. All of the options that are, that I just showed you, they're great, and they're, they're a product of our staff comparing us to what other agencies offer. And some agencies you'll see have every single one of them, and, and that's how they get that salary at a much higher rate. In addition, though, in order for us to remain aggressive in our recruiting efforts and establish us as a destination agency, we have to have a very comprehensive step-by-step approach, and tonight's the first step. Each recommendation presented has a positive outcome in terms of growth potential for us as a department and in terms of the safety that we're able to provide to the city and to the citizens and to our visitors every day. Although, all the aspects considered would be extremely beneficial, and if you, if you just want to say yes, I'll just go back and we'll do them all, it's important that we consider that incremental step. So, our recommendations are as just, adjust the starting pay to, from 51 to 53, as I showed you in the first slide. Create the senior patrol officer recognition at the four-year mark. Add an incentive for military service at 2.5%. A second language incentive, because I think you all would agree at this point, it's, it's becoming very crucial that we be able to at least speak a second language of Spanish for now. And what we hope to do in the future, we're exploring the use of instructional methods such as Babbel so that we can add another if the need arises. And then last, it would be future consideration of a loyalty incentive to make sure that although we're doing things on the front end to incentivize and to recruit, that we also don't forget that we need to maintain those veterans who are at that 15-year and greater mark, so that we have that institutional knowledge when those officers that are getting old leave. That being said, I will field any questions, be glad to answer anything that you might want to know about how I derived where I landed.
Do we have a trainee program, and how would that factor?
So, the way law enforcement works is if you come in and you're not, you've not been to basic law enforcement training, there's two paths. You can send yourself through the community college system, or you can be hired as a cadet, and then we send you. Unfortunately, in where we are currently in our status as a state and as a law enforcement profession, no one is signing themselves up for basic law enforcement training on their own accord. The current academy has 10 students in it who are from the city of Greenville, three from other municipalities, and only five who signed themselves up. That academy cannot even operate with less than 10. So, had it not been for Greenville and these other three municipalities, the police academy would not have been able to hold this current class. And that's been the case for the last two sessions. So, that is where we are as a profession. It was last year, I told you that there were enough people who graduated the basic law enforcement training in North Carolina for every agency to hire .9. So, if the entire state pool of graduates, there's not enough there for each agency to hire one. So, we're going to have to do it on our own.
Yeah, I think Les was next. Well, you know me, I got a litany.
Well, you have it, have it.
Thank you very much, chief, for your presentation. I'd like to start with a couple of nuts and bolts questions. How many total officers do we have?
200.
200. So, when we're looking at 27 openings, that's considerable.
Yes, ma'am.
That's more than 10%, that's what, 12, 13%?
Yeah, and we've been as high, when the height of the issue started, most agencies that were suffering were around 25%, and we've held ourselves somewhere around 15% of this.
I just commend you and all your staff for working, because I know that when you're missing people, it creates a lot of work, additional work, as everybody else shoulders that additional work. Couple of questions have to do with things that can't be quantified, and they are, have to do with the way policing is different now. And you talk about, when you were talking about your daughter, and I know that police officers are now asked to do, to do everything from social work to mental health counseling. And so, when we look at, at our policing, how, how, how is that being addressed, those additional burdens that you all are not trained for? Do we need to look at a social workforce? Do we need to look at a mental health force? Do we need to look at ways to restructure so that you all, so that officers are able to police, and when there are additional issues that are not, you know, robbery in progress or a holdup or something, where you all can police and other, other skilled professionals can do some of these other aspects? Is that, is that a relevant consideration? Can you address that?
It is, and it goes in tandem with what we're doing currently with Trillium through our co-responder model and our STAR program. Coresponders go out with us to situations that would, would probably benefit more from not having a law enforcement response than a law enforcement response. But in the recent past, half of my career or more, there's been no one else to do that response. So, it falls on us because we're the first 24-hour entity that you can pick up the phone and call and get somebody there fast. So, when we partnered with Trillium on our co-responder model and they start going to these calls with us, individuals in crisis and things of that nature, we're able to get the officer back on, on the street quicker for emergency calls and leave that into hands of the co-responder. We are finding that the training itself, the, the state, in fact, has recognized it, and we are increasingly, currently, the basic law enforcement training program from about 640 hours to over 820. In fact, I want to think the very next class that will begin will, will increase from 16-week to 22, 24-week program. And that's simply because of the demands that are on, demand a woman that are taking the job on. So, yes, that is an issue. What we do in-house is we accomplish it through our, our in-service training. And whatever the state mandates, so each year the state mandates around 24 hours of training, we as a department mandate over 60. So, we're taking it upon ourselves, and again, that is a detriment when it comes to staffing issues, because now in order for an officer to go to training, I have to backfill that position, which equates to a higher overtime rate, which equates to that officer may have to go to training and go to work. So, every piece that you're asking is relevant. I would say that at this moment, we are on the cutting edge of, of each one of those facets because of what we've done with Trillium, as well as what we've just now done with our civilian traffic crash investigators. So, we're bringing on four civilian personnel who will take property damage crashes that do not require a citation to be issued, and that will, we hope, will alleviate 25% of the calls for service on the officer so they can focus more on the proactive patrol.
And I would like to add, I think council can take pride in knowing the amount of time and effort that is dedicated to training for our Greenville Police Department staff is above and beyond in this, in this state of what we do, and that's a direct reflection of the priority that we place on making sure that when they go out on the street, that they have the best skills available, and we've done everything we can to train them.
And I think if I could just... Make the mark of those other locations.
Just to close off that remark, I think we see when the time on task now is far exceeded what it used to be. We used to, you know, the answer was very simple when I got to your house, sorry, no crying, bye. We don't police that way. That was, that was the old way of doing things. We, we understand the value in, in spending time with the community and explaining ourselves and working through problems. So, to the extent we can, we want to do that. We'll also lose that piece when we're understaffed, if, if the officers feel as though they've got to get back to the next call to the next call.
And that sort of gets in my next couple of questions for you, which is, well, it's budget season, and I, as a council member, want to make sure that we are thinking as creatively as we need to and that we are not limiting in terms of how we are structured and what we ask for when we look at things like those kind of resources you need to make sure that, you know, your, your officers aren't overburdened and that you have the resources you need, like, you know, with Trillium and, and having like the civilian accident patrol. So, I really appreciate that. Just a couple more quick questions. Do you feel like, I know this is probably the universal question employers have, when you want to get really good caliber people in our police force, which is what I'm hearing you say, you want not just people who can do the job, we want to have outstanding caliber officers. Do you feel that the options you presented us are how, how, those are ways we can do that?
They're, they're a great start. We will have to continue to build on that as time goes. The profession, I remember when I was in college at East Carolina University, and they, they talked about our bachelor's of science had a P behind it, and that stood for professional, is a professional degree. This is a profession. It's not, it's not something that can be taken lightly because there's a lot of things that I could do that would require less training and less devotion of my time in order to do it. This is typically something that requires a person to be called to the service, and when they are called and they look, we have to acknowledge that the population that we have now are not just locals like maybe we were 30 years ago. You look for something that was close to home. We have candidates now from as far away as Ohio that we've recently hired. Virginia, I have one right now coming in from Virginia. So, that's not uncommon. People are actually willing to make those moves now and go and relocate. North Carolina, I think, is, what are they saying now, the third largest, fourth largest growing state in the union? And if people are coming, we need to be ready to buy for them and fight for them.
And I would add to that, council, this is not an easy job. It is a very, very difficult job, and unfortunately, we don't have grows of individuals that are just dying to get into this profession. And with that being said, it's always going to be competitive. It reminds me of, of the days of nursing, in the, in the years and years and generations of nursing shortages that we've had, where you got to continue to be unique in what you do. Again, this is, this is great, what we're proposing here, but I can't say that a year from now that we're not going to have to continue to be looking at modifying this to be able to keep up with the demand that's out there for, for what we want is the tier one officers.
Thank you very much. And my last, my only last question is not for today, it's that when we're looking at our budget, maybe at our workshop, I don't know, just to know what the budget effects are for these proposals.
And let me just say, this can be absorbed within not only the increase in the, within our current year revenues, but also within some of the overtime dollars that we would be saving by doing, by, by increasing our force, and then we will true this up into the budget next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Chief, thank you for the presentation, and my question is this. What's the most effective way you think we can hire people away from other agencies to get that wisdom and experience that you and I both know goes a long ways in a department? Is what you're playing, is that good enough to try and, because what we're, what you've said to us, people going in is very small now, what you said, less than one person for every agency in the entire state. That means the pool of which we're trying to pull from is very small. But we do know there's lots of officers that may be dissatisfied with their agency for lack of leadership, lack of income, lack of longevity. How do we recruit those officers that already have that wisdom and experience that they can bring to our, our department and share it with the young officers that you're bringing in?
I think that exactly what we're looking at right now is probably key. The 1% added for years of service allows that person who's been, we're not matching their whole career, but we're doing it up to 10%. So, an example I have of, of two individuals who have recently been hired by, by our agency from other agencies that had attained the rank of sergeant. And that's, you would think, wow, they're going to leave their rank and they're going to go back and start over as a Greenville police officer. They came in, though, with a 10% increase over what other officers would. So, once you get them off probation and you... increase over what other officers would. So once you get them off probation, and you recognize, too, that that person is going to excel because they're quicker study. The brand-new officer, I'll use my daughter as an example. We pray that she passes, and you can say a prayer for me, too, because I need it off my insurance. But if she goes into law enforcement, she's got a steep learning curve. Not only does she have to learn geography and roads and rules and laws, but she's got to keep up with the training and adjust to a 12-hour schedule. It's a lot, and it's for the young, it's not for the old. It will, even now, going out and working nights now, at only a mere 49-years-old, is getting tough. So when that person comes in, you want them to be able to excel. So that sergeant who hits the ground with us after their probation, they're eligible for promotion, they're eligible for incentives, and they're going to make a quicker climb. I have one who we just hired in a group of three from another agency who has already attained a position as a major crimes detective because of the experience they brought from their home agency.
My other question is this. I don't know how to put it, but one way. Why didn't you clearly put us in second place instead of letting us compete with number two? I mean, if we want to be a destination, we can get, because if I understand correctly, and I think I, because you and I have talked about this extensively, since March of '22, correct? We had been down and not made really any substantial progress towards getting officers. And as a result, I know I've crunched the numbers, our accents have gone up because we don't have patrolling officers, that we just don't have the manpower or the power, man and woman power to put out in the streets. Do we need to do more to really send a message to the community that wants to work as a law enforcement officer? We're willing to pay to get you to come here. Do we need to do more?
As you know, and I've shared it with you all before, as we've talked about it over time, if I had my druthers, I'd be the highest paid in the state, and I'd always have a rule that no matter who updares, we always updares by another dollar, so nobody could ever beat us. Sir?
Why the hesitation? I'm just being as blunt as I can be. Why are we hesitating?
Because I think in terms of thinking about the incremental steps, that we want to present something to you that's palatable and within what we can currently do with available funds.
And that's not to say that as we move into the, this is a mid-year adjustment right here. This is not typical. I would say in the 10-year, nine years I've been here, I've never seen a mid-year adjustment like this. That's how important this is. But we are getting ready to start the budgeting process. We're going through the council retreat at the end of the month. This will be an opportunity in this process, if that's the will of the council, to take another step, another step at this. And I've heard collectively, what I've heard at least from two, is that that's what they would be interested in doing.
I just wanted to send a message that, to those who want to go in law enforcement, we've got a great leader, and you've done a lot. You know, I've been in the same business for 38 years, and we're on the opposite side of the aisle, but I can tell you, you're doing a great job, and I appreciate it as a citizen in Greenville who's lived here all my life. But we need to also send a message that to the officers who want to come here, we're going to take good care of you and make it a priority, so you can make us a priority. And I think that's what we need to come from. I appreciate all the work you put in, and I know you put a lot into it, but we need to do more. Let's do more. If this isn't getting the numbers we need to get, I hope you'll not hesitate to come back to us and say, "We pride this, and it's not working," to get these, because we've really, we've got to get these numbers down, because it's a safety issue, number one, period, for everybody that lives in Greenville.
Well, thank you for the comments. I thank you for the directness and allowing me to share what I would do if money was not an object, and recognizing that we have to do a lot with what we're entrusted. This is, I do believe, a really good, as the manager said, a good mid-year adjustment. Then we can consider others later. However, I will say this, too, and that is, thank you for your support, because it is extremely important that the men and women that are out there, as they're learning, think about the amount of work that a 12-hour employee does. It's like half a year's worth of contact, right? Because they're working 12-hour schedules. So a year's worth of work, we've had them for about a half a year. It's a lot to pack into a half a year. And it's a lot that can only be learned through experience. When you deal with the types of things that they deal with, the only way they really learn it is by doing it. And each situation, test them every time. And if we want them to handle situations smartly and compassionately, then we've got to get them over that seven-year mark, because at year seven, cut it in half, how long have I had them on the street? Three and a half. So think about that in terms of the way we, the way our stuff works. But sincerely from us, all of us, because I share it with them each and every time I go to roll call, we have a great amount of support. And I know you'll hold our feet to the fire, but I thank you very much for your support. Thank you.
Chief Saul, thank you again for the presentation. You mentioned about BLIT. Is that in conjunction with the community college?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There are, almost all community colleges probably have one, some don't. But you could pick and choose. We like Pitt because it's closed, and our recruiters can go over and check on them during the day if they need to. And it's also a greater, there's a greater standard at Pitt than there are at some other schools. They actually have a higher standard, require greater scores, and a tougher process, which again adds to putting the best officer on the street.
I was thinking in terms of being able to home-growth our own officers, if there's an opportunity to maximize or better use the community college, I don't know if it used, but partnership with them?
There is, and we have looked at it in the past. As I came up through the ranks when I was sergeant, I was in training for five years, and I studied it at depth back then, to have our own academy, much like the Highway Patrol does, or Raleigh, Greensboro, Charlotte, those larger agencies. But it takes a cadre of about 15 to 20 people just to run an academy, and it is a very in-depth program. Currently, the arrangement we have with our community college, I think, best suits us. But if the staffing levels were where we could do that, then there would be no reason we couldn't.
So there are officers that go to BLIT at the community college that are hired by Greenville Police Department?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Does that motion do adjourn?
It's moved.
All right. Motion is made by Councilman Liefert, said by Councilman Robinson. All those in favor say aye. All those say nay?
Aye.
We are adjourned.